Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call this regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission to order. It's Thursday, May 24th, and the time is 7:02. First item on the agenda will be the roll call.
Commissioner Harris?
Here.
Commissioner Steven?
Here.
Commissioner Sims?
Absent.
Commissioner DeGenet?
Here.
Commissioner Baker?
Here.
Vice Chair Corzak?
Present.
Chairman Barnes?
Present. Thank you. This time, could Commissioner Baker lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Start and begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll move that we approve the agenda.
Motion from Commissioner Baker. A second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice Chair Corzak. And we have a roll call vote, or a... Oh, I can do that myself, sorry. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Agenda is approved. Thank you. Next item is the consent calendar. Having items on the consent calendar, I will open a public comment portion. If there's anyone who wishes to speak on the consent calendar items, please come forward. I'm sorry, do we have a list of names? I apologize.
Yes. Rafael Bergargas?
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and guests. One of them has to do with JFK and Moreno Beach. I thought about it, and I liked the project. And I thought about all the gas stations that are out here in Moreno Valley. And a lot of them, apartments and houses live by them. But the only one with this one, this one is the closest one that would be on the corner, next to the homes. And that's why I'm against that project. Not that I don't want him to do business in Moreno Valley, but he is too close to houses. And that's why the residents came up against him. My second one is the fireworks. And the staff said it themselves real well on page 15, "The Facts." They gave the facts. And I'm going to read it as page 15, number two, "The Facts." Their facts. As the sale of fireworks is prohibited in Moreno Valley, the impact on public health, safety, and welfare of the proposed regulation of fireworks sales through a temporary use permit cannot be determined until such time that it specifies requirements to allow the fireworks in Moreno Valley to be established. Okay? Nothing has been established yet with this first part. But the second part is the one that... Why I don't want fireworks sold in Moreno Valley. Therefore, depending on the specifications, future regulations to allow fireworks that may be adapted, there is a potential, that's the key word here, a potential, that they could be an impact on health, public safety, and welfare related to an approval. In other words, don't change anything, don't mess it up, leave it as it is. It's been working for a lot of years, and a lot of people in the city of Moreno Valley know, they know, that we don't have permits, and we do not sell fireworks. We don't, and as much I would like to have nonprofit organizations make extra money, this is not one of them. There's other ways to doing cookies and cakes, and lemonade, and a lot of people that give, that's the best way to do it. We don't need to have the fire department and our police department to go out and look at unnecessary things by us, by us, you approving anything like this. If we keep it the way it is, the city of Moreno Valley will have one more day of safety, and that's what counts, that one day.
Thank you, Mr. Bergargas. Next speaker, Ken Iglesias.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, staff, and fellow residents. I think fireworks should be sold in Moreno Valley because we have to remember what we're celebrating. We're celebrating independence from the superpower at the time, which was the United Kingdom, and we beat them. I think fireworks should be for sale. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Craig Fry.
Evening. My name's Craig Fry, and I'm here to speak about the project at Moreno Valley and John F. Kennedy. I'm here representing the owners, and I understand it is a consent item, but what I would ask is if the board would consider voting no without prejudice so we can go back to the community and find out what their needs are. When we first came to Moreno Valley, we fell in love with the project, fell in love with the area, we met with the city staff, and altered what we originally started to meet what their requirements were. We thought we had a very viable solution. We downsized it tremendously, but what we'd like to do is reach back out to the community, find out what their considerations would be in order to try to get this vacant lot that has been there and really has been an eyesore for a while, for us to come back and see what we can do. What the project we had was developed where we'd be creating close to 70 to 80 jobs for this city. We did fail in our outreach to the community. We are going to be knocking on doors, finding out what they need, but we'd like to have that opportunity to do that, so that vote with no prejudice would really assist us in doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. Do we have any other public speakers? One more.
Good evening. I'm Rose Baldwin. I represent 78 neighbors that are in opposition for the gas station to be put in, and I just want you to know that if you do agree to his appeal, and it does go in front of the Planning Commission, that you will be having 72 people speaking for the city council about this gas station going in. It would not matter if he goes door to door, no one is going to change their opinion on this, and I just want to present that to you and let you know. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Having no additional public speakers on the consent calendar portion. I'm entertaining a motion to approve the consent calendar. Is that the correct way to present it?
Yes.
And that would be the motion to... Okay.
Okay.
We have a motion to approve the calendar?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Baker. Not sure how to vote electronically on this.
Who is the second?
Commissioner Baker. Oh.
There you go.
There we are. Will everyone please vote? Oh, yours didn't light up? So, all right. Apologies, we have a technical difficulty. Very good. All votes have been cast, the motion carries six to zero. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes...
Chairman?
Pardon me.
These items are appealable to the city council. It's a 15-day appeal period, just to wrap up.
Thank you. My apologies. Got to pay more attention. All right. Now moving on to approval of minutes from previous meetings. Separate vote, Paul, is that correct?
It doesn't have to be.
Oh, all right. Well then, if someone would like to move that we approve both minutes as presented, that would save us a little time. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Baker to approve.
I'll second.
And a second from Commissioner Harris.
Who made the motion?
Commissioner Baker. Commissioner Harris seconded. There we go. Please vote. Motion carries six to zero. Now to public comments for items not in front of the Planning Commission tonight. Anyone wishing to speak, please turn in a speaker slip. And no speakers.
No.
Okay. All right. Very good. Moving on, non-public hearing items, there are none. Next up, public hearing items, case number one, PEN 180022, a conditional use permit. The applicant is Yum Yum Donut Shops, Inc., DBA win-win. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Chair Barnes and Commissioners, excuse me, Associate Planner Gabriel Diaz will be making the presentation tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. The applicant is requesting approval for a conditional use permit application, CUP, that allows for the sale of beer and wine at the recently approved Wiener Schnitzel, I'm sorry, Winchell's Donut Shop. Located at the northwest corner of Alessandro Boulevard and Day Street, this CUP application is required for the sale of alcohol due to the project being within 300 feet of a residential zone and a residential use. There is no change to the approved floor plan. The alcohol sales are limited to 25% of the cooler area, and we do have the floor plan up there. Once the applicant receives an approval for the CUP, the applicant will submit an application with the State Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control, ABC. Planning staff has reviewed and determined that the project qualifies as a categorical exemption, Class 5, a minor alteration to land use under the provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA. This is a change from the public hearing notice where planning staff stated that the project was exempt as a Class 1 categorical exemption under existing facilities. While processing this application, staff did contact ABC and the police department to review the project with them. Public notice was conducted, and there is no public comment to report. I have not received any calls or emails regarding this project. Staff recommends that the Plan Commission take the recommended actions as proposed by staff. This concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Commissioners, have any questions of staff?
Yes, I do.
All right.
I'm, when I read all these things that were in the packet, I understand that there is actually a large concentration of these type of licenses. So, I mean, even the Alcohol and Beverage Control only allows two. So, how many is there? It just sounds like it said there were quite a few. I know the store right next door also sells the same product.
That is correct. ABC only allows for two licenses without a letter of convenience and necessity. The applicant would need to provide that through the police department for their approval through the ABC processing. I did talk with the lady from ABC, and she stated that there was 11 Type 20 licenses in that census tract.
Oh, gee.
The census tract does go all the way up to the Town Gate area. There's a lot of restaurants, and there's other gas stations, and it goes all the way to, on the west side, to the 215, up north to the 60 freeway. So, it does cover a large area. The closest alcohol cells that we stated in the staff report was the neighbor, the La Buena Market, that does sell alcohol and beer and wine, basically. And then, there is a liquor store further down, about 600 feet. That's going towards the freeway, so it's getting more commercialized. And then, in the city of Riverside, at the 215 Alessandro exit there, there's the AMPM that has alcohol cells also.
I just can't understand what the necessity would be. Can they justify that?
I can just clear up, just part of the way this works. Should this commission grant the CUP, the applicant will still need to get their license from APC, from the state, and it's possible that, based on this criteria that you're discussing right now, that they won't be able to meet that qualification and get that letter of convenience and necessity. It's a separate action that will happen after this. So, the facts that would lead to such a letter, they haven't, aren't before this commission. That's something they'll have to fight with and deal with with the state licensing board. So, there's kind of two, they have to get through this board for the conditional use permit, but they're also going to have to go through ABC to get that license.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Harris.
If we already know that there has to be a letter from our police department that says that there is public convenience and necessity, why wouldn't we just ask the police department, would you be, are you willing to give this letter instead of going through all these hoops? It does say that that's, you know, from the police department, there has to be a letter of necessity, and from the city.
That is correct. For the alcohol sales, the reason this is a CUP is because they're within 300 feet of a residential zone or a residential use. If they weren't within that, you, this would not be a CUP application. They would just go straight to the police department for their letter of necessity and go through the ABC licensing.
Any other questions?
I also understand that in the future, they're thinking of building some apartments that will be right across the street.
There is a site that the city owns immediately east, which was mentioned in the staff report. At this point, there's some discussions about apartments, it is zoned for apartments, but there's no formal submittal at this point in time.
Okay, but there are the homes that right now are there, and then there's a potential for having apartments directly across the street, so they're going to be within a pretty...
The homes to the north and any homes to the northwest, those are actually non-conforming because that is commercial zoning, but the property to the east that you mentioned, that city owned, is residential zoned.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Mr. Harris.
Just the necessity issue, when there's already an ABC license, Type 20, at the La Buena, whatever, Market, that's in the very next lot. It seems like there's two right next to each other, and how that would be, how you could justify that as a necessity.
Well, first of all, the conditional use permit, I think, really has to be looked at and dealt with first because the ABC license, the letter of public necessity is really part of the ABC licensing, so that can't really be looked at until CUP has been acted on in some way and the ABC license has been applied for. So, at this point, the applicant hasn't applied for the ABC license. So, in some regards, I mean, there was some discussion with police department about the project, they did have some recommendations, we incorporated their recommendations into conditions of approval, which are placed on the project. So, that was, we did involve police department, there was input through the review process.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Would the applicant like to add anything to the staff report? Come forward.
Good afternoon. My name is Liliger Damaso, and I actually represent the applicant who is here as well from Liquor License Agents, and thank you so much for having us here today, and also thank you, Gabriel, you've been really helpful and professional in this endeavor. First and foremost, we just wanted to talk a little bit more about the necessity because that is the main aspect. Yum Yum, and the applicant can talk a little bit more about that, it's a specific project. It's more of a combination of donuts, which, by the way, there's some that he brought, and they're delicious, and coffee shop and sandwich, and also a convenience store. So, it's more like a three-in-one type of deal. The different locations that are adjacent to this proposed location as of now is more of a meat market, or more of a hard liquor where they offer 21, or then also the convenience aspect of it. So, this is more like the three-in-one for a specific type of person that maybe just wants to have some donuts and get some beer and enjoy it at home. He, the applicant is proposing as well to have the 24-hours operation and to hire up to 15 to 20 employees, so again, bringing back the revenue to the city. Likewise, security, camera surveillance is something that is definitely going to be a part of this inside and out, and we also wanted to show a couple of pictures of an existing location, so you have an idea, so the modernized look, the donuts, the sandwich shop, and the way that the refreshments are placed within that establishment as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lincoln Watasi, I'm the president for Yum Yum Donuts, Winchell's Donuts, and we're a family-owned company headquartered in the City of Industry here in Southern California. My father and his partner founded Yum Yum back in the 70s, and I've been the president since 1993. Excuse me. In 2004, we were fortunate enough to acquire Winchell's Donuts, so that today, with nearly 200 stores, we are the largest chain of donut shops in California. We have 15 new sites, new shops in development. Five of those are the win-win fill-in station concept. This is a new concept for us. We opened our first win-win fill-in station just three months ago. This would be our second. The win-win fill-in station in the city of La Puente. And so far, so good. We have, we're enjoying sales of over $30,000 a day, which translates to $10 million a year, so that's, you know, helping with the, contribute to the sales tax base for the city, as well as the increased property values by, with our build-out. Part of this is, rather than just a standalone donut shop, we're looking to really maximize the use of the real estate. So, by bringing in these different revenue streams of gas, convenience, fast food, custom made-to-order sandwiches and soups and so forth, along with a full production bakery and donut shop, we believe this to be the first of its kind in California. This second site would not have the gas component, just because of size limitations, because of the size of the lot. But I'm happy to say that we've hired over 20 local full-time employees in the city of La Puente. We've been very positively received by the, by the local community. We have five stars on GasBuddy, and I think 4.8 stars on Yelp. If the comments from the, on those, on Yelp and GasBuddy include, you know, a very clean station, very friendly service, good, clean lighting, and so, as this picture illustrates, you know, we're not a liquor store, we're not just a donut shop, we're not just a convenience store, we're not just a gas station, we're all of those things, and even within the convenience component, you know, liquor would only be one part of, and I would say that the beer and wine would be just a small part of our total, total, of what we're trying to present ourselves to the community. But that said, as a convenience store, you know, we do need to be a convenience store, we need to provide products that are expected to be offered in a convenience store. I believe that our approval of the beer and wine license will have a very positive effect on the current existing beer and wine retailers in the area. I think it'll put pressure on them to want to be more, better operators, to have more secure, you, as we attract customers that hopefully will come to us, they're going to have to up their game in order to stay relevant and to stay competitive. So, I think that we, we're in a position to have a very positive impact on the, on the whole neighboring environment for beer and wine. I believe that by allowing us to offer beer and wine, just because other folks are selling it, you know, it's not like more people are going to drink more or less, they're just going to have more convenient options for where they, and where they are able to procure those, those products. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant?
I was just wondering, when you initially applied, did you already apply knowing that you were going to put in for the license, or no?
Well, yes, we, from day one, it was our, as a convenience store, we were expecting to, to be a full-service convenience store. This is a new process for us, and we're used to opening donut shops. The first station we opened three months ago, that was our very first station, so that was our first time of ever selling a gallon of gas, or a pack of cigarettes, or, you know, a pack of potato chips. So, there's a learning curve taking place, and we're relying on our architect and engineer and consultants to guide us through this process.
Okay, because I was under the impression that you were approved for the convenience store, but, and that was prior, I guess, to, two months ago? So, basically, at that time, you weren't applying, or you didn't present that you were going to be selling alcohol?
I believe, that is correct.
Okay. That was my question. That was my question.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. No other questions, let's open the public hearing. I see we have two speakers. Mr. Burgeras.
Good evening, once again, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, staff, residents, and our guests. We want to make this clear. There are two types of license, 20 and 21. They are applying for 20, beer and wine only. If it was 21, then it would be the hard liquor with the high percentage of proof, okay? So, this is only wine and beer, okay? I believe that everyone in this room has done it once or twice, been to a place like this while you're on the 15. You've been inside one of these places. I like the picture, the three-in-one, because we've all been inside these buildings while we're on the road. Taco Bell, Jack in the Box, but we run to Jack in the Box. We don't run to the liquor department unless the water's nearby, but we don't buy liquor, we buy water. So, the consumer has the right either to buy liquor, wine or beer or water. They make the choice like each one of us has when we run on the freeway or we stop somewhere. We run into places like this. We do not pay attention to the wine and the beer. We do not. So, what he's bringing to the city of Moreno Valley is no different than what's already out there. It's called convenience. People have the right to buy wine or beer or water or donuts, because they'll be my first, but I seen them at the airport, okay? So, if I don't want to buy beer, I know I'm buying donuts. I have nothing to do with beer and wine if I'm buying donuts and coffee. That's the way it is, okay? What I like about this, if everybody, if all of you, I know you did, between 45, 46, and 47, the rules, really, these are the rules that he must obey if you approve this tonight. These are his rules. He has to have an alarm system to notify Moreno Valley Police if there's any trouble. That's number 18, okay? No trespassing signs, number 13. I love number 21. After 2:00 in the morning, those doors that sell liquor, I mean, not liquor, got to be careful, wine and beer will be locked between 2:00 in the morning and 4:00, 6:00. So, no one can be able to have access to that. So, he has to obey the rules. They are good rules if you look at page 45, 46, and 47. This is my guideline for this point on, for anything that comes in through this here, convenience. This is my guideline for anybody that wants an ABC license or Type 20 or 21. This is my guideline. If they cannot meet this criteria, then don't do business in Moreno Valley. If we can hold him responsible to these rules, we can hold everyone else to the same standard.
Thank you, Mr. Burgeras. Mr. Iglesias.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and staff and residents. First of all, first of all, again, I'm against that project, but since the commission already approved it, make sure it's not feasible or accessible. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you very much. No other public speakers? Seeing none, would the applicant like to comment on anything that the public has had to say? No? Thank you very much. All right, with that, we'll close the public hearing and deliberate. Any thoughts?
The only problem I have is the fact that there is an overabundance of licenses already out there, and there's a store right next door, I mean, it's virtually next door, that is already selling the same product, and I don't know if it's going to end up hurting this business, and that business has been there for many, many years. And I just, I don't know, I kind of have a problem with it only because they're quite saturated with the alcohol in that area. And that area is a depressed area, let's just face it. On that side of town, if it were, you know, where we just ended up not approving a project for certain reasons because the public did come out and there was huge public outcry, but in that area, a lot of those residents just don't seem to be entertained really with what's going on in that area. It's been like that for many years. I've been here, I dare admit. But I just have a problem with the saturation of that many type of businesses and, you know, the project itself, I think it's wonderful. You're building, everything is really, really a nice project. I have no problem with that. What I have a problem with is justifying the necessity, like they put in the staff report of issuing another license. I don't know if they would do it or not, but I kind of wish they would have a little more, I don't know, it's just the fact that that one is right next door. I don't know if it would even hurt the business itself or not, but it's just the fact that there was so many things in the staff report that just pointed to this reason why, this reason why, and I just have, I just have a problem with it. So, I don't know how I'm going to vote on it.
Well, just by observation, there's only three within a half mile because the census tract goes all the way up to the 60 freeway. And so, you've, that would include the restaurants and stores up there, right? So, BJ's, Chili's, Applebee's, Acapulco.
Right. In reality, there's really two that are within 600 feet. The third one that's half a mile or so away is actually outside of the city limits, Arco Station.
AMPM.
Yeah, right. Everything else is far north on Day Street, a couple of gas stations on the Riverside side, but other than that, it's basically restaurants.
Right. Any other comments? Mr. Harris, I think I cut you off before.
No, I just, I thought I heard someone say that in this track area that has, extends all the way over to the 60, there are 12 licenses within that area, or 11, I'm sorry, 11, and this would be 12 if it was, got the conditional use permit.
And that is correct, and we were just kind of talking about that. But again, the majority, about eight to nine of those are really clustered up towards Town Gate, so they're really a different experience in terms of beer and wine sales. I mean, you have restaurants that have beer and wine, that kind of thing. There are a couple of gas stations up towards the freeway, but again, you, you don't have very many convenience stores with beer and wine.
Thank you. Anyone else?
You know, when I think of convenience stores, I can't think of one that doesn't sell beer or wine. It kind of goes with the territory to me. No matter where you travel to, you know you can stop there. You don't go there to shop alcohol to find the cheapest price. You go in there, you're traveling wherever you want, bring some wine back to your room or something. I think it's a very innovative approach, and I really like the design of it. I think it's a very clever use of space. I was going to ask maybe a question about how long can you sit in the area and eat the donuts? Is anyone welcome to sit in that area, even though it has nothing to do with this? I'm just curious. Yeah, I was just thinking, I know, I'm just, it's just a curiosity. We know that they can't open the alcohol when they're sitting there.
Correct.
Paul, excuse me.
Yes.
Do we have to reopen the public hearing?
Oh, no. Oh, I'm sorry. I shouldn't have done that.
No, it's okay, I think, at this point.
It's just a simple question.
But we'll see where it goes.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see where it goes.
Well, I just wanted to share, so one of the innovative parts of this concept is we have no seating. We have no customer seating.
Oh, you don't?
Part of the challenge is if you have a convenience store where you really, having tables and folks sitting around next to racks of product, it would, it's just, would create a challenge as far as keeping an eye on everything.
So, there'd be no invitation for people to really sit there and drink the alcohol?
That is correct.
Okay, that's it.
That wouldn't be allowed anyway, would it?
Yeah, it wouldn't be allowed under that license.
But the, would be...
So, basically, it's kind of like your AMPMs or whatever, you just go in and buy your product and then leave.
Correct. The donuts, the coffee, the fast food, custom-made sandwiches and soup, it's really a convenience store for people to purchase, make their purchase, and then get back on the road.
Thank you.
I, for one, like the project. Back in, I don't want to date myself, wow, 77, 78, I actually lived on Day Street. And I agree with you that the area does need to be built up, especially the south end of Day Street. Wish there was a drive-through, that would be nice. But being that I lived there, you know, that particular area is kind of rough, so I would say to the applicant, be careful there. That's, I could name several rough, ruffians down in that area, so just make sure your security is intact.
Anything else? All right. Well, I think it's an excellent project. The fact that it's going to compete with its neighbor, fortunately or unfortunately, I don't think it's in our purview to decide, you know, who gets to compete with who. So, I think it's innovative. I think it will upgrade the neighborhood, and I'm, I'm all, I'm all for it. It's a minor addition to something that we wholeheartedly approved earlier, so I don't have an issue with it. So...
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, excellent.
Okay, I'd like to move that we approve resolution number 2018-29 and thereby certify that the proposed conditional use permit is exempt from provisions of the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA, as a Class V categorical exemption to CEQA, guideline section number 15305, minor alterations in line, or in line use limitations, and also approve conditional use permit PEN 18-0022, based on the findings contained in the Planning Commission Resolution 2018-29, subject to the conditions of approval included in Exhibit A of the resolution.
I second. I have a second from Commissioner DeGenet. Please vote. Got to hit the button. All votes have been cast. The motion carries six to zero. Congratulations. Do we have a wrap-up?
Yes, Chair Barnes, the commission's decision is final unless appealed to the City Council. Now, the applicant will be proceeding to alcoholic beverage control.
Thank you very much. All right. Next on the agenda, other commission business. There is none. Do we have any staff comments?
No, sir, no staff comments.
Thank you. Any Planning Commission comments? All right. With that, we are adjourned to the next regularly scheduled meeting on June 28, 2018, at 7:00 PM here in these chambers. Thank you, everyone. Good night.